If you bag your heads, we're gonna start with the word of prayer. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with us today to give us discernment and wisdom to make decisions that honor you, Lord. We may we pray, amen.
Amen.
Hug them, calm down. We've got Reverend Lord Morton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to come before you. I have several questions. One of my questions is, why is this back on the agenda? When it was clearly voted on to not have it on the agenda indefinitely. But here we are again. We've had seven call meetings. And I think maybe three, maybe four regular meetings. And here we are again. Had an opportunity to ask questions. I'll let you get through laughing, man.
What'd you say?
I'll let you get through laughing before I continue.
Good, cuz your time's running.
Why is this broadband such a priority? When we're in the midst of an economical crisis? And who will provide the modem for this broadband? Who would connect the service to the residents and at what cost? How would you go about persuading the residents to switch from their current carry to this new carry that you're all about to approve or whatever? This is a failing venture. You know why it's a failing venture? Because of the way you guys presented it to your constituents. This is a failing venture. And as a businessman, a former businessman, during an economical crisis, you tighten your belt and hold on. You don't invest. The citizens have already spoken. Why is it y'all don't listen to it? On a local radio station, not one person called in in favor of this broadband. Open your ears and listen to what your constituents are saying. Otherwise, some of y'all won't be in those seats coming later. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanna tell y'all, um, shorty. Um, I'm gonna tell y'all, thank you for having this meeting. Um, my understanding is that you have done a lot of work and things have not, um, things have not always worked out the way I think this group had hoped they would in regards to broadband. But I do recognize that the city has put a lot of work and effort into this and also a lot of money. And for that reason, I'm standing up here saying, I appreciate you continuing the discussion because I think it's worth having the discussion to go forward. My understanding is we weren't here to make a decision. I don't know if that's the case or not because I haven't actually looked at the agenda. But I don't see anything wrong with having a discussion and I thank y'all for listening to us.
Thank you.
I guess there are ladies, sir.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come and discuss with you today. Uh, the continued discussion of the broadband project, fiber to the home project here in Jasper and the benefits that it has to the community. Uh, as you've heard from the testimony here, it's, I know y'all been working on this project for eight months. Y'all been looking at it. Y'all established a need, connected nations, debt card previously, done a study, established a need that there was limited fiber options, uh, limited high-speed reliable internet available in Jasper. Uh, and council, Mayor and Council had a desire to go out and try to find a way to deliver that project to the community. But as we've heard previously today, there's been some concerns and ongoing deliberation with the project. So, uh, on March 22nd, I sent an email out to the council after the project, after the original contract with Kramer was tabled. Recommended maybe that we pull back a little bit and look at different procurement methods, different ways to deliver the project, be able to address the residents' concern through reducing the city's long-term risk and exposure. Um, bringing in an operator or manager, identifying exactly what those costs are gonna be, exactly what those options would be, um, what the accessibility would be like across the community, what the affordability, would there be an affordability component to the community and what that would look like? Um, and I heard a lot of positive feedback from the Mayor's Council after I'd sent that email. So I put together a little diagram or a handout today for y'all to go through. Establishing what is a public-private partnership. Uh, first off, I do wanna say, in working across the state, uh, this is how I believe that most fiber-to-the-home broadband, uh, projects are gonna be delivered as we move forward, especially with the amount of grant funding that'll be coming down in the future from the federal government, uh, once they figure out how to do that publicly. Yes, sir.
One second. And I appreciate you saying how you're saying it cuz most people don't understand. And a lot of people, they're not hearing, all they're hearing is broadband. And I appreciate, and please, in your, what you're saying, make sure people understand that what they're looking for is not just broadband. But that's all people think, just broadband, broadband, broadband. They don't understand the application, how we, what they're trying to do with it. And it's not just like, and my colleagues will tell y'all, it's not just on the phone, they're talking about fiber. Okay? You gotta make sure that people understand what you want to, what you're trying to produce here.
Sure.
What type of service you're trying to produce, so people can understand that. If people don't understand it, naturally, you're gonna get some pushback on it. So you need to, need to make sure that people understand what you're trying to do. If it's fiber, say that.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that people know that. I just poll the town or whatever. Make sure people know what we're trying, what type of product, what type of service we wanna produce for them and why.
Yes, sir. Uh, well, a fiber-to-the-home broad internet service is much more robust than, um, what we've been accustomed to in early 2000s, mid 2000s, where you originally, you know, when the internet came about, it was, uh, it was telephone connection, then it went to DSL, and then there was copper connections, which is how you receive your cable TV. Um, but the, the gold standard for how to receive internet and the reason why all across the nation you see these initiatives in rural cities and counties is the lack of fiber. Fiber is the gold standard on how to deliver internet to the home.
Why is that?
Because it's fully scalable, the speeds aren't, uh, constricted by the technology or the, or the copper that's going to the house or the phone line that's going to the house. So once the fiber's in the ground, you can offer speeds today of a gigabit, uh, coming to your home. And that's what Jasper would, would like to pursue is a symmetrical gigabit fiber-to-the-home network. That means not only do you get a gigabit coming in, but you can also send a gigabit out. Uh, that's important because of all the connected devices you have in your home now. You have ring doorbells, you have iPad, you have eye watches, you have, uh, thermostats. Everything in your home is connected to the internet. And if you don't have the proper, uh, speeds and availability coming into your house, you won't be able to fully utilize the technology that's available to you. But more than just things inside your home, there's opportunities for workforce training, education. COVID proved that, um, that, that it's critical infrastructure to be able to have a high-speed reliable internet access at your home whenever everybody went home to learn, work, uh, educate themselves. Telemedicine is a huge trend across the nation. We see that a lot, um, in, in underserved communities where they may not have a hospital down the road and they can, but they can pull up their iPad, they can talk to their doctor because they have high-speed fiber internet coming into their home. And that's what it means. It can create, you know, we heard the comments earlier about in an economic downturn, you know, why spend this money? Because, uh, fiber can be an economic upturn for a community. Uh, it helps the businesses that are here today, uh, conduct their business more efficiently and better and can also, uh, help you recruit new businesses coming into the community that may not be able to, that may be reliable on, or they may rely heavily on high-speed internet, but that's not available and they can't move their product out. That's why symmetrical gig connection is so important. They may have to look in other communities. So, uh, back to what I was saying, uh, before that is, is I believe public-private partnerships are gonna see, is how these projects are gonna be delivered, uh, across the nation, across the state. Uh, and some of the original American Recovery Act fund, grant funds that came down after COVID, they spelled out that cities that were gonna utilize those funds to deliver a fiber-to-the-home project had to partner with a private internet service provider to operate and maintain that. And I think that language is also gonna be in future grant funds that come down the line. So I think it's natural that you consider this as an option. And as, and, uh, whenever the city of Jasper got ready to start on this project, the, the most common procurement method across the state for any city or county is to design it, bid it, and then build it. And that's how cities and counties have built parks, streets, water, sewer for years. And it's how a lot of cities and counties will continue to build infrastructure. In, uh, 2010, '12, I can't remember, the state legislature created laws to allow public-private partnerships, uh, to become a, a state-alone procurement method. They'd been around for a long time before that. Uh, they were originally started in major infrastructure projects, think some of the outer loops around the major metro areas. Uh, a private company would come in and build that, and they would toll that road for a certain number of years. They would develop, they would generate revenue off of it, and that's how they would get a return on their investment. But they would partner with a public entity like Tech dot to put it in there right away. Tech dot would own the land and ultimately they would long on the roadway after, uh, say a 50-year concession on that project. But public-private partnerships have evolved to allow for different projects like this where, um, there's a demonstrated need. Uh, the city has resources to be able to apply towards that, whether they be internal funds like the city of Jasper has or for some communities, grant funds. And then also to partner with the private provider to operate and maintain it so that there's long, the long-term risk of having to hire employees, maintain it, having to hire the equipment, the trucks, uh, and, and all of that can be put on a third party. And then there's a fee agreement or a revenue sharing agreement between, uh, those two entities that allows, uh, each one to be able to meet the needs outlined in the agreement before you ever go to construction. And that's kinda where we are today, right? We heard, uh, the first gentleman that came up today, you know, has a lot of questions. Um, there's a lot of questions to be answered. And I think evaluating, if the council chooses today to continue to evaluate this and say, hey, look, we really think that a public-private partnership, we get through the presentation today is, is the proper method to deliver broadband to the community, uh, then you, you have a chance to pick your operator, uh, identify what the costs are. Is there gonna be an affordability option, is there not? What are the benefits to the community? What are the long-term risks, uh, to the operator, to the private entity? What are the long-term risks to the city? And then you have to come back and, and, and provide all those questions and answers to the community and know that you've got, uh, that you've, you've done your due diligence and you've got, uh, a complete roadmap for this project long-term. Uh, so P3, uh, in, in its most basic essence, uh, when a, a public entity, uh, higher education's done this for a long time. If you wanna research P3s, higher ed's gonna be, uh, where you're gonna see it most common. Uh, they use it for student housing, they use it for arenas, they use it for convention centers and hotels. Uh, there's a lot of infrastructure projects out there as well. When it's where a public entity contracts with a private company to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain. Uh, so they, when you contract with that private developer, um, they basically take all the risk from the city, utilize their own funds, and then develop a method to deliver the project in best, in its, in best depth it's a community. It creates, uh, financial flexibility, uh, it brings in expertise that doesn't stress your, your staff or you don't have to have, hire additional staff, uh, for inspection or to oversee the project. And then it, you enter into a long-term operating and maintenance agreement. And that's what the, the first, uh, page that I, I presented to you here is. And then the next one is just kind of a roadmap on how, uh, just it lays it out in a different format on, on how you can go about procuring P3s. Uh, this is a little bit longer, uh, roadmap, uh, than, than would need to be, need to take place in Jasper because y'all already done a lot of the due diligence. You've got multiple feasibility studies, you've already, uh, received a bid from a contractor that can go out and design the project and build the project. Uh, what's to be determined, I think, is who's gonna operate, manage it, and what's that operating and managing agreement look like? Uh, benefits of a P3 typically, uh, I think everybody would agree the private sector can typically build things faster and, and cheaper than government can. Uh, you, you typically see lower construction costs because of the bonding requirements, you can negotiate harder, you don't have to take low bids. Um, and then, uh, another major advantage, though I think Jasper considering this is, you know, Jasper's very fortunate that they have the funds to be able to allocate to go out and build this project without issuing debt or relying on grants to, to deliver the project. But also, you can evaluate how you can potentially partner with a, a private company, uh, to utilize some of their capital. Uh, and, and I think council's received a proposal where Kramer's offered up some, some, uh, to, to pursue that and look at putting capital into the project. But there's different models that the council as a whole has to evaluate to say, hey, look, you know, is that just another hand in the cookie jar or is this gonna be profitable and we just wanna go out and build it and own and maintain it? Or maybe we wanna finance it and we just wanna pay the debt service out of the reserve funds we have so that if something does happen, uh, we can do additional infrastructure projects that may be needed today. Um, on a $15 million project, probably the debt service would be around $2 million, uh, $1 million. And you can finance that for 10 years, all the way up to 30 years. You can structure where the note's smaller upfront or larger upfront. It just creates financing options for Jasper, um, to better utilize some of the resources you have. And you get the opportunity to evaluate, deliberate that, and make those decisions, uh, on, on what your community needs.
Financing options, that mean the city would have to go into debt again?
Uh, actually, actually, the, uh, in a P3, the, uh, the developer issues the debt on behalf of the city. Uh, it's based on the city's credit rating, but the developer holds the debt and owns the infrastructure and then the city leases it back knowing that they're gonna own that, uh, own that utility, um, when the debt is settled, 10, 20, 30 years down the road. Um, but that's just one way. You don't have to do it that way. That's just one option that says, you know, hey, instead of putting $15 million into this project today, uh, there's risk associated with that. Um, and that may be the path that the council chooses to go. Um, but it may also say, hey, look, we wanna finance half of it today so that we can do, uh, some other infrastructure projects we've, we determined that we needed, and then we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, pay a lease payment on the other half. Uh, that debt's completely off the city's books. Uh, you see that off, 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 off sheet, uh, or off books, uh, financing, so it's not, it's not debt issued by the city per se. Uh, but...
You wanna wait till the other council member gets back in here?
Sure.
You say so, you said, Mayor.
Okay. Um, so, the Jasper project, fiber-to-the-home project, the need's been demonstrated. There's concerns on how it's gonna be delivered and long-term risks. That's what I've heard. I, I've not heard, uh, any feedback at all that, that high-speed reliable fiber optics to the home would not be valuable for the community. Um, but there is a lot of concern on what that looks like long-term for the city of Jasper. So I think if, if the council wants to continue with the project, I would recommend that we address some of those concerns through evaluating a public-private partnership. And that's what this meeting is about today, to address those, any questions you may have, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, specifically about this project, what that would look like, um, and, and anything else that I can answer for you today. That's, it's a short presentation, uh, but that's how I, I would recommend for, continue to, uh, continue on the project.
So what you, so what you're saying is, with, there are other options that are out there, but right now, you know, what, what, what we're looking at, uh, anything that you recommend in the way of, of, that's your recommendation as far as the public-private initiative versus what, what we have now?
I think so. I think, I think it's gonna, most importantly for the city of Jasper, I think it's gonna reduce the long-term risk and exposure in the city of having to operate and maintain it, right? Once the city, and that was the original intent, the city was gonna design it, bid it, build it, operate it, and maintain it. Uh, and then once we started, uh, going through the process, uh, and, and getting a better understanding of the project, there was some, some talk and, and some consideration for, well, maybe we shouldn't operate and maintain it. Maybe we should partner with a third party to provide that. Uh, but right now, we don't know who that provider's gonna be. Uh, so what I'm recommending is form a team and get all of those questions answered now before you commit to moving forward on the project. And you already have some of those pieces in place.
Hmm. So what, what about the option of just the, another company coming in and doing it themselves without having the city of Jasper partner? I mean, and I understand that, uh, some of my colleagues up here are looking at it from a revenue standpoint, my colleagues, as far as revenue for the city, but maybe they see something that I don't because I don't see that much revenue from a project such as this coming in from the city. And I'm trying to be as open-minded about this as I can, but I don't see it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, I mean, that's, if, if somebody wanted to come in and build it privately, uh, there's things the city can do to incentivize that. You can do, uh, you can streamline your permitting process, you can streamline your poll attachments for the polls that you own. Um, but at the same time, uh, in my experience is what you find is the major telcos, uh, they won't go in and overbuild in, in areas, and that's probably why they're not here today. Uh, if, if nobody's showing up and knocking on the door and saying, hey, look, we'd like to get started, build this project, uh, a gigabit fiber-to-the-home network, uh, they're probably not coming. And that's where you see a lot, uh, that's why you see in the infrastructure bill, there's $65 billion dedicated to rural broadband for local government entities, uh, across the nation because the major telcos are not moving forward, going in and overbuilding. A lot of them that I've talked to, the AT&amp;Ts, the Horizons, uh, that were in the space, you know, 10 years ago, they're putting most of their resources and capital into wireless technology cuz everybody's carrying around a phone in their pockets. But it still doesn't address the needs and meet everybody's needs of what, uh, operate in, in your home.
Denise, could I ask you a question? With all, with all this being said, uh, are there grants or, are grants out there, you know, for, to provide to the cities to do that? I know they're open accountants, but what about the cities? Do you know of anything available in there?
Not, not by all means, there were some coming down at times, but I don't know if it's right now, but you asked it.
No, there's nothing available right now. Uh, there will be grants made available in the future, but that's all to be determined. Uh, just this last legislative session, the state of Texas, uh, was a little bit behind the curve in creating the, the broadband office, uh, just this last legislative session. So they're out doing, uh...
I was gonna say, I think of the Sevigny, you know, there's 234 applicants in Sevigny County. There's 234 entities applied for a grant, one got it.
Um, and there was just a, a listening tour that went through Beaumont last week out of that office. And, uh, so they're out trying to get their hands around it and get prepared for when that money comes. But it's usually a long process. The federal government releases it to the state, the state then has to create a program to distribute it to the counties and the cities based off the requirements of the federal government, so...
So currently, right now, you have...
Per, per that grant, you know, when they go into Sevigny County and lay that fiber, they're not gonna be hooking up to someone's house that has a copper line to it already. So they're gonna run however many miles of fiber and they're gonna skip over Joe, who lives off the highway, who has a copper cable in his house, and he gets 28 months to. But his neighbor, who doesn't have copper cable to it right now, or get a fiber optic when he get a gig debt. So they're, you know, Sevigny County got the grant money. That's been a big, hot topic, people have asked some questions about it. But I mean, the realistic, realistically looking and saying, will Jasper be able to get a grant? It's rolling dice.
Yep, Jasper County, I mean, the city of Jasper County.
City of Jasper, county of Jasper.
County of Jasper will be.
This region, though, getting a grant, it's pretty slim.
They'll, they'll be competitive and, and there's no doubt, if, if you're leading the project, you ensure that 100% of your residents and businesses, you can dictate the, uh, can receive service.
Just to shed a little bit of light on what we're saying here, yes, the, the infrastructure bill has a lot of money in it and I think we can expect to see broadband filter down. Um, it usually takes about four years for those things to happen, so I just wanna give you a, a timeframe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but, uh, to Councilman Daniels' point, uh, when you're, when you're driving the bus, you get to dictate the terms of the service. Uh, and, and you have a tremendous opportunity, demonstrated need. Um, I think it's just getting the, the questions answered to the public with a comprehensive plan that allows the city of Jasper to know exactly the arrangement that they're gonna enter into to be able to make sure that this is sustainable and it's not gonna be, uh, a long-term liability for the city. Like a golf course, for instance. A city I managed before, we had a golf course and we sent $700,000 a year out of the general fund into the golf course cuz it was, it was a, it was a recreation opportunity, but that was the decision the Mayor and Council wanted to make. But that's not what I'm hearing about, you know, the broadband project. And the Mayor and Council wanna make sure that this is gonna be sustainable long-term.
Are you, are you aware of, cuz I'm, I'm not sure, and I, I know Kramer made, done this within their feasibility study. Are you aware of, that there was a questionnaire sent out for the businesses and the residents of the city in reference to the fiber broadband?
No, our feasibility was based around the cost to construct, to construct the network to pass every house and determine how many businesses, how many houses there were. But, I mean, looking at the need for it here, the, uh, the infrastructure, uh, they're not upgrading. Um, and to talk about the, the funding opportunities, the recent money that came out, there are specific service requirements Jasper already meets, like minimum service requirements. And so, I mean, municipalities across the board typically are not gonna qualify for the federal funding that is available. Um, unless, unless the state gets it and Texas decides that, hey, we are gonna fund some of these municipal projects and comes up with a process with that. They're starting to talk about that now since it was new and wonderful. But no, we didn't, we didn't do a questionnaire on, on need or ask. We were, we were studying the cost and the construction methodology and, and, uh, you know, just pricing and what, what the business...
Can you feel, so it would have been for you to be able to, for you to do that as far as, with your study just to, you know, get a feel as far as how the residents and the, I know you, you may have talked to some of the business people, but, I mean, I think it would have been pretty good to be able to, for you to go out and, you know, send out a, a study or a questionnaire to ask the people, you know?
In, in the design, I mean, there's enough studies out there that show you that there's a need for fiber-wired broadband in most communities. And when you look at, uh, like the two studies that were done here, um, they looked at what's available here, the infrastructure here, the speeds. Uh, we pulled all the costs, people were currently paying and did a, a study on, you know, what's the highest available? How much does that cost? What's the tier package? What is the equipment cost? Uh, and put all that together. But as far as, like, asking people what, what they need, this, this was, I mean, people didn't think they needed electric back a long time either and so they thought that, but, I mean, there's, there's a difference between what need, this is an investment in infrastructure as to the way we look at it, not really, uh, like a one, but it, it's, it's just for betterment of the community with better service.
You know, we've come a long way, we've come a long way from the light bulb.
Part of, part of one of the studies that we pulled, it showed, what was it, 32 or 34% efficiency here? I mean, we're talking about, imagine if city of Jasper, 34%, I mean, I'll just round it down. Say 30% of the city didn't have roads, it's just dirt. Can you imagine an hour from public to get saved streets? I mean, that's, we're kinda moving in that direction in technology, where fiber is, is a necessity. And right now, copper cable, it just, it's not, it's not gonna cut it in the next five, seven years. I mean, the data I work with right now, I can't even operate a Jasper, I drive to Houston, I deliver a hard drive to, to customers. Cuz I can't operate...
Yes, sir. Um, just add, um, looking at the numbers from the studies that were presented and the revenue streams projected, um, Jasper has 30% poverty rate and also 15% of our households are 65 and older living alone. So we, we do have people, I, I'm in 100% favor of having much better internet speeds available to all people. But have you thought at all about the, the underserved people who we're talking about needing this for various reasons? How they would be able to pay for even the lowest package?
There was, there was money that came out a few months ago that just went, this one, EBB.
Can't hear you, David.
There was some funds that came out a few months ago that the state has announced, EBB funds. They gave a small $50 to $80 subsidy for, for once, I believe, it was a total, and they had also allocated up to $100 for some type of tab...
And they had also allocated up to a hundred dollars for some type of tablet device. That's is, that has ceased to exist. It's my understanding, I do not have any specific law I can give it to you, that they're discussing subsidizing some of the entities that have internet in some of these areas that qualify, just like reduced lines, just like snap some of that. And they're, they're wanting to meet the criteria of whatever the state would consider broadband, I guess for school usability money for kids and stuff. And they're talking about eighty twenty, so the city will have to reduce their charges by twenty percent to get paid eighty by the entity that will come in, just like an EBB thing was. That's why it was fifty eight and a hundred on some of those, yeah. It has not got off the ground yet, they do not have any bills that's going to promote that's the direction, I understand, they're going to try to go, they're going to try to find people that already had something in place.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I do believe there's an FCC program for that, for about fifty dollars a month. Yeah, it's it's going to be fifty, right now it's forty dollars, thirty nine ninety nine, and then come this November, it's going to be a fifty dollar subsidy. So I know there's people, few from the public that have discussed about low income and trying to pay electric bills and things like that. Part of this package, you will be able to get a federal subsidy on it, it's going to be about a fifty dollar reduction on your bill. So if you get a lower tier package, and I'll just go throw a number out here, say it's seventy dollars a month, their company paid fifty, you you paid twenty dollars a month. And your head gig got beat down service.
Thanks, I've seen other communities where they offer to address the affordability issues in their communities, they offer a lower tier package, it wouldn't be a full gig with no caps. But it does give you the reliability that you need at a reduced price so that you can, you know, provide a minimum basis of reliable internet to the home. You know, you wouldn't be able to stream Netflix for twenty hours a week, but could you do schooling online? Yes, could you conduct work online? Yes, could you do workforce training online? All of those kind of things, there would be more restrictions placed on a lower tier package, but there's definitely communities that have looked at that and addressed it. And it tended to a lot of communities in South Texas specifically, that was their reason why they were getting into this business as a city utility was to address, one, the need because it wasn't available. But also ensure that it's going to be affordable to the community.
One of my, my things is, when I was talking, Brandon, when I was questioning Brandon about this, for that brings me back to the question, what the young lady was just saying. You know, with the numbers that you were given, with the lower income households and the senior citizen households, would be the importance of a questionnaire. It's like, how many of those people actually would need this service or would actually use this service? And how many of those, I mean, I know those households may be in the minority, because like you said, we we do want to have reliable broadband service for our students in case of incidents like with COVID that happened again. But we want to make sure that, you know, that it's going to be utilized.
People that need it, the internet now is a basic human right in the United States.
I know people are discussing, it's going to matter computer in the house.
Mr. Land, like, honestly, it wasn't part of our scope to study, like, who we wanted here, it was like, how much would it cost us to build it, to design and stuff like that? So when when we were approached, I mean, that, you know, we we looked at the cost and the methodology and pricing. We did run some models with with lower tier groups and showed a in ROI at a longer rate than where it was. But, you know, when we, so we, we, it just wasn't part of our scope to study.
And I think that would be, that would have been an important part of your scope.
I agree, I just, the city, you know, you guys are taking so much time and effort to review the information that's provided to you. I just feel like it's critical that you have the right numbers in front of you, but I mean, you know, census data is census data. And we use it every day in our jobs, and I just want to be sure that the information that's provided to the council on the projected number of households that could possibly be connected and so forth. Because that's where you talk about your revenue streams and your your trade off. So I just want to be absolutely sure that y'all are getting the right numbers to make an informed decision. Because I think that's critical to the the success of the city council in making these decisions.
Mr. Daniels, you told me on Monday, a week ago, that the city never had any intentions going into the broadband business.
What day was this?
The day after, well, it was the day of the last city council meeting, Laura was a witness that y'all weren't in turn, you didn't care if you had any consumers out there. That you were going to in turn sell it to four providers for fifty million dollars.
That's a false statement, but thank you for your comment.
It's not, you said it in front of Laura and me, and she said, Debbie, listen to this, is what you said.
I've heard a lot of comments from Ms. Foster over the past few months.
That is true.
And I have to say, a lot of this is a little bit.
I don't lie.
Out of context.
That is what you said. And Laura is my witness, because she told me to listen. Fifty million dollars, you were going to sell it, you had four providers, and I wanted to know where the dotted line was, who was going to be the four providers.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Foster.
Question for the media, Ms. Golden, is that true or false?
We did have a conversation after the meeting. I do not recall that number. We, we talked about a lot of different issues, I encouraged Mr. Daniels to have a conversation with you. Also encouraged him to have a conversation with other people, I do not recall those numbers, Debbie.
Question from the media, Mr. Daniel, the following day after that said meeting, did you call KJS and say that you planned to sell the system for fifty million dollars?
That's incorrect, I did talk to Mike Laup, though, there's a, some wonderful things that Mr. Laup said that was very pertinent about your point of view, so.
Did you, did you say to Mr. Laup that that the city would sell the system for fifty million dollars?
No.
Mr. Land, back to the comment you had earlier, though, about the, about the affordability option, I think that is important for justice. But I think entering into a public private partnership, the mayor and the council gets to dictate that. If that's a priority of the mayor and council, then you dictate to that private provider who's going to partner with the city that they have to, they have to provide an affordable option to people that meet certain requirements in the city. And if those options don't become available, where there's rebates or subsidies available to the city of Jasper, that they have a plan to deliver without it. I think those are, those are the kind of things that you get to outline in an agreement that they have to meet. If they can't meet those requirements, then you go on to the next provider to say, can you?
I I had a chance yesterday briefly to visit with Anderson, as we were talking about, he was concerned about some of the same things I was. But I told him, if we've got a list of these people and we know we have issues, especially if the government's going to possibly subsidize these, is that if this is built out, when we get to those locations or houses, we can go ahead and bring fiber in with the permission of the property owner or the resident there. And should it come to pass, all we would have to do is turn it on, it would be lit because the hardware would already be in place. And that may be an option that we could look at to make sure that we fully utilize it to those lower income people. Just go ahead and have the hardware there in case some, if the school were to have to shut down, if they did pass some funding, it would subsidize it or be in that location.
Right, if they did.
But you have to have consent from whoever lives there, property owner.
But there would be a cost for them, hopefully, like you were saying, hopefully, there would be some type of subsidy that would be there, but if there wasn't, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, well, we talked about it yesterday, we just said, maybe just install those locations that we knew that the school could provide or some of the other entities could. And there would be a charge unless it was actually activated or lit. We even talked about the school, some kids, or the school, and maybe the city could help them out for two weeks rather than have a school or something and not provide that a charge if there weren't some funds.
I think there's options available, I mean, I think that's what the council, you know, and the mayor is here to discuss, right, there's options available. But we'd like to know what those options offer.
Right.
We need to exhaust all those options, and we need to, and we need to, we need to determine what the priorities are for this utility to benefit the taxpayers and residents in Jasper. And when you create that plan, you go to the market and say, hey, look, here, here is what we're looking for as the city of Jasper. We've got revenue or that we're looking, that we have available to put towards a project, or we're interested in in what partnerships are out there? Is there any people that are willing to put, bring capital dollars to put to work? We have affordability concerns, we have, you know, here's what we want, how are you going to meet it? And then that's when you partner.
I understand that. City, man, I don't want to put you on the spot. Don't? You don't want me to?
No, it isn't.
Because you know what I'm going to ask you?
No, I'm not going to ask you.
No, but I just want, I just want to know your opinion, that's all.
I'm not saying, I I mean, I agree with everybody else that I feel like we need the broadband.
Absolutely, I agree with that too, but.
I mean, I think the options that, you know, that Nathan is bringing to the table are worth considering, but that is you as council's decision. I'm in the direction of what you choose.
Thank you.
One question that I want to ask is, what harm is this fiber optic network going to do to the city?
What was the question?
What harm will this do to the city?
Well, when you say harm, what comes to mind to me is only financial harm. Because the only kind of harm is obviously we're not going to suffer any other kind of way. So I don't think that any harm is going to come to anybody, but I'm not sure that I understand, based on the number, how how long is it going to take for the city to pay this off and start making money? Based on on the number of of households we have here. And that's what I keep coming back to and looking at, because that's how we operate in our business. So all of this other stuff is kind of boring.
I think I'd be around and see that, so, you know.
Well, I mean, I think that when you're looking at doing a project, that's one of the most legitimate things you want to look at is your return.
Your return on it, yeah, all right, wait, how long is it?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's part of, that was part of our feasibility study, we ran, and there's different numbers you guys were in.
Yeah, anywhere from two point eight to nine, depending on the construction methodology and the pricing points.
Two point eight.
Two point nine one.
Years, two point eight to nine years.
Was that on the county or a city?
That was just on the city, and that, that I considered sixty two hundred total addressable market. But you have to have, I mean, it really depends on your pricing and and all of that.
How far outside of the city would you go to get that sixty two hundred?
Just the ETJs or EJT's.
CTJs is two miles.
Yeah, so about two miles, and we we skirted down some county roads.
Well, that was the two point nine nine years or something, let's just say nine years on a, what was it, double, fifteen point four?
Fifteen point eight.
Fifteen point eight, fifteen point eight.
And that's a projection, right? That's, that's.
Yeah, and that's, that all depends on what you decide to go with pricing.
Ms. Evelyn?
It's the city.
Ms. Evelyn? Yeah. Ms. Evelyn, did you?
They went two miles outside the city into ETJ for using the.
To get sixty two hundred?
To, to using the census data that were provided in some of the blocks, it's about a two mile outside of the city limits type of way. And I think, I think it was a little further than when you went out, twenty seven ninety nine, where the end of power was. Some of the areas already have city water, sewer, Rye Acres, sewer comes from Homewood, I think it was a couple of their houses, I don't remember exact details from some of it, it was, it was outside the city.
Ms. Evelyn?
A little over a year ago, sometime in twenty twenty one, when broadband was first brought up. And did you, Mr. Daniel, say that you didn't think that it was a good thing for Jasper at a city council meeting? In fact, you refrained from voting on it, and didn't you say later that you refrained from voting because you thought it wasn't good for Jasper at the time?
What was not good for Jasper? What, what are you referring to?
Broadband.
Okay, the fiber project?
Yes.
I can go back and look, but I don't recall that.
On your Facebook page.
Was it July, in July of twenty twenty one? It says, I abstain from voting on the budget.
Better read. I can go back and look, but I I don't recall that.
He said, I can abstain from voting on the budget for the city today, one of the one items.
I understand what you're referring to, I'm actually glad you mentioned that. That's a very good question. So does everybody understand what this Evelyn O'Neill is referring to? Do you, do you truly understand, because I'm about to drop a hammer, you're going to go, holy shit.
Drop it.
So, here's the thing, so there's, there was a project, it was, it was nine hundred and eighty six thousand dollars to run one mile of fiber optic cable. It was approved by a previous council, and when I came in, I didn't, I didn't agree with that, because there was nine hundred and eighty six thousand dollars for one mile of fiber optic cable ran inside the city lines. Now, think about that, a million dollars to run one mile of fiber.
Was that, that was only, I don't recall that, that was.
I, I, I.
That's something we did. Do you have proof of this?
Well, we could go back and look, at the time, I was looking at it, and it was about a mile, and it was nine, I believe it was nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. At the time, I came out of the council, I didn't agree with that, so I abstained, I didn't want to vote, because I didn't even agree. Was that for AT&amp;T? It, it, I'm not quite sure, this was a year ago, I've slept a few times since then.
You also said that, that you didn't want to waste the tax dollars, but you should seek out the state and federal funds that will be available in short order.
Yeah, at the time, I was doing research on that, and there's, like I said, I made that comment, you're correct, on Facebook, but it was not pertaining to this project.
Well, you did say that about the federal funds that were going to be available in short.
Yes, and if you heard my last statement, I was doing research at that time and calling around, calling people, calling people in the state, calling people in Washington DC that I knew, trying to get information on funds for the city to expand a fiber optic network, because we currently don't have one here in the city. Governor Orsworthy, you had something to say?
Yes, sir, I don't see any harm that it would cause, Mr. Daniels, the way it was presented, it looked suspicious.
What's, what was presented?
The way the broadband project was presented, when the citizen came here to ask questions, four of you guys did a no show.
What, do you?
We came to ask questions.
We had already voted on it in a previous meeting. Excuse me, Mr. The Rogers.
No, go, Mr. Orsworthy, go ahead, I'm listening.
Excuse me, my question was addressed to Mr. Daniels. When we had questions, the citizens had questions.
Okay.
I'm not against the broadband.
Okay.
It's just questions need to be answered, that's all that we're saying.
Okay, well, we've had, this is the fourteenth meeting on this, so we've had fourteen meetings on this, and all meetings have been available for public comment. How many more meetings do we need to have? And we also have a website to address those questions that you have, if a citizen doesn't want to ask them in a meeting, you can go to the website and ask them on there, and they'll get back to you.
Now we need to vote on it to see what our citizens think about it, the tag of layers, I think. I don't think that this type of money.
I believe this is the fourteenth or fifteenth.
I don't think that that five people can decide on spending that much money when it belongs to thousands of people.
That's what you passed the big money for, Ms. Evelyn.
But these people were elected in good faith by the citizens of Jasper to make decisions, I think they're making good decisions. And I just want to know how much rock do we have to deal with negativity in the community when we have an opportunity to move forward? I've been here my whole life, we've had this little lit thing and discussions, and nothing happened, here is an opportunity, so why don't we take it for goodness sakes? And thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, you know, that's, I'm I'm glad you pointed that out. Look, as I, I got out of council last year, I want to, I'm young, I want to do good for the community. I came back to this, I don't even work in this community, I don't even own a business in this community. I do all my work at Houston and Beaumont, but I live here so I can bring the resources that I do make back to the community, provide a service. I volunteer, I pick up trash off the, off the highway, I donate money to organizations, I do a lot of good things here in the community. When I left here, when I was eighteen years old, I went to the Marine Corps, I fought overseas, I came back, I was embraced and helped recover. I left again, working wool field, but you know what, I always came back home.
And you have good quality of life.
There's a good quality of life here, and.
Thank you for your service.
And so, thank you, and so, you know, over the past year, I've been demonized, I've been slandered, lies, there's been all sorts of stuff. I mean, I mean, there's, there's, I hear stuff on the streets, I've seen, I've seen some presentations passed around town, people print documents out and say, hey, this is what so and so saying, eye of the saints. And it it it's almost hurtful, because I love this community and I wanted to do good for it, yet there's so many people. Yet there's so many people that are just trash talking behind the scenes. And I don't want to single anybody out here. But you know, even, even in the past election, there was someone that didn't win the election. And on their Facebook page, it says they wanted to fix the internet. And they're sitting in this room now. Yet some things I've been hearing around town about them, what they've been saying, it's they're going back on what their campaign was. And it's like, okay, well, now that someone else is doing it, you don't like that idea. I mean, there's just a bunch of little bitty childish activities have been going on the past year. And there's been personal vendettas against people up here in the council, in the media, in the general public. And it's getting old. It's getting really old.
I just think it has nothing to do with you. I think it has to do with that money, amount of money.
I'm just, I'm talking about in general. Since I came to the council, I've been here a long time. I serve my community. And some of the things I've seen over the past year is, is really embarrassing.
Well, let's stop talking about that and move forward.
Exactly, yeah, I'm ready to move forward. This is our fourteenth meeting on this.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I have a question back toward this, uh, this public-private partnership concept. So, if, if the city were to explore that route, then I would assume that the private entity that would be involved would, would do more research on the number of people, feasibility of the number of connections that we really do have in this area and how far out we need to go to get enough revenue to, uh, is, is that correct? I mean, would they basically start, would they basically start over with new numbers if you're to go this route? Or where do we go from here with the, uh, P three process?
So, um, to answer your question, I think there's a lot of outline, outline questions that need to be answered. The public has concerns about, right? And I've heard multiple times that it's not whether or not broadband would be beneficial to the community. It's what it's going to look like long-term for the city of Jasper. And it's fifteen million dollars the right way to allocate funds for the project. So, I think whenever you partner with a private entity, you share in those costs and those burdens and those risks. And you have an agreement in place before you go to construction, before you go sell the product that specifically outlines what is going to be charged. Is there an affordability option? Exactly what are the parameters of the project and where's it going? Is it sixty-eight hundred or is it twenty-three hundred? Or, uh, in the future, there's going to be opportunities to partner with Jasper County. So, can, you know, is that included and evaluated? Private entities are, are going to make sure that all of those questions are answered, just like the public, uh, public entity wants to make sure that they've got all those before you get married into a twenty or twenty-five year relationship. So, I think there will be additional due diligence that will be required. There will be additional questions that have to be addressed. And I think there's different options that have to be evaluated. You know, and, and at this time, it may be that, you know, it may end up being a better option to stream it all versus bury it. But there's, there's, you know, that's not, there's risks that are associated with that too. We all know the hurricane's coming, right? And you're not going to have, you're not going to have internet. Everybody depends on internet to get their information and what's going on, the weather.
Hurricane comes and you lose power, you're not going to have an internet anyway, so. But I understand, it's better if it's underground.
Question from the media, would that internet service you're talking about be underground all the way from the provider to Jasper?
Yes.
It would be in Jasper, would it be in Jasper?
No, 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 no. Where it's coming from, if it's coming from Houston or Dallas, Lake Charles, if a hurricane comes in.
You're always at the risk of wherever you take the internet connection.
So, whether it's underground or above ground here, it really wouldn't matter?
Well, yeah, it does because you have, you, you make.
You would have a redundant system. You would typically design these that you have two different connections coming in. So, that if one goes down, the other one picks it up and can serve the entire community. And it's unlike, it's unlikely, Kramer will be able to speak more specifically to the details of that, but it's unlikely that both services go down. You can typically take them from one from Houston and another pipe coming in from Dallas. It's a different routes. So, you can build the system to be redundant.
Yeah, yeah. Let me ask you a question. What, what you're saying, that the options that are available, some of them do look, look interesting. So, now, so like Kramer said, okay, yeah, we have other options with the partnership. And they said, okay, look, we want to revisit it and this is what we want, and we'd like to present this to you. Would other companies be able to come in and present the same option that they're doing? I mean, would you have to re, revisit that? I mean, you know, it's just they have the option to do it. You'd have to give someone else the option. Would you, as our consultant, recommend to our city manager, to us the board, say, okay, look, I have two, three other companies that, you know, have this and I'd like to, they have an opportunity to, uh, present those options to the city, to the council?
You know, I mean, they, yes.
Yes, our short answers, yes.
Yeah, that's what I want to show it. I don't need the extended answer.
Yes, the answer is you have to.
Okay.
From the state, the state guidelines.
Right.
As written, you have to send out a D R F P and entertain proposals and so forth.
Okay.
So, I, pardon me, I have a question. So, um, other communities have built fiber optic broadband, correct?
That's correct.
And have any of those others built it and then sold it after they built it? Maybe it, it wasn't profitable or they felt like that they could make a profit off of it?
Not that I'm aware of. There's one city that I'm aware of that's, uh, currently going through that process now. But Dayton, you know, the city of Dayton is going through the valuation process now. Uh, they, they were, uh, they were hit by COVID just like so many people were.
Yeah, I called them today.
Yeah, it was probably the, you know, worst timing. The project was supposed to be five million. Uh, but by the time they went to construction, uh, price increases and escalation pushed it nine million dollars. So, it doubled their per, their per connection cost. Uh, made that, 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 uh, return on investment a lot longer. But that's another reason why a public-private partnership is beneficial. It's because you have a private entity that shares in that, in that risk with the city.
Even with the economic climate, climate, the way it is today, you think that would still be a good recommendation?
For the city of Dayton?
No, no, for the city of Dayton. No, I'm saying for the city of Jasper. Given the economic climate today, I mean, you know, you think that would still be a good recommendation for the city of Jasper today?
Without a doubt, I think partnering with a private company to operate and maintain this network petitionally.
And who would that be?
Well, I think that's to be determined. I mean, I think that's part of, uh, the mayor and council's due diligence. We have to evaluate who that could be. I mean, you already have one company that's interested, uh, that's put considerable time, effort, energy and resources into the project. They indicated a willingness. But there are also maybe other, uh, internet service providers out there that, um, that would entertain coming in.
But I gotta agree with one thing. I mean, what Ms. Goldfield said, we need to stop playing around. I was going to say something. We need to stop playing around with this. Whatever we're going to do is whatever we're going to do. I mean, I like your recommendations. I like what you're saying. Yes, there's a need for this in the city of Jasper. I mean, uh, but yeah, definitely not, and everybody knows that I'm opposed to spending sixteen million dollars on this project. But if it's, if, if, if we can get a partnership, and whether it's with Kramer or ABC Company down the road or NBC Company down the road or CBS Company down the road. But we, we need to get something and get it going and get it established and just get it done and open it up. But right now, and I'm just going to tell you right now, my colleagues know up here, I'm not spending sixteen million dollars on this at all. Yes, it's needed, but it's not going to happen.
Pardon me?
I mean, at least I'm not. You guys may want to do it, that's fair, but I'm not.
I have one other question. So, the revenue, is that just from the homes that are going to participate? So, we're going to build an ultra-fast information highway. And it's going to go to every single house in Jasper. And then they decide, business, and they decide if they want to hook up or not, okay? The opportunity is there for them if they can participate.
We're going to build a land, we're going to build, we're going to build a land and they have the opportunity to hook up to us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
If they want it.
So, here's my question.
They have the opportunity.
What's the other way to generate revenue through this project without just relying on people signing up?
Uh, so there, so the, the major telecommunications company, if they want to put a new, uh, cell tower into your community, you can generate lease agreements with them to charge them for, uh, backhaul and power. Because even though your, your phone runs off a wireless connection, it comes from a wired connection at some point. An example of that, in the city of Mount Bellevue, we built a new water tower. We, uh, designed it to accommodate, uh, telecommunications equipment with a chaise and a, and apparatus connected to on top. It was a, I believe, a five hundred thousand gallon storage tank. And, uh, it cost the city one point three million dollars to build. And we signed a twenty-year agreement with Verizon for one point one million dollars, uh, to attach on to that infrastructure. You can, uh.
There's also. What's the population of Mount Bellevue?
Uh, population of Mount Bellevue, when we started the project, six thousand. It's currently just shot nine thousand. Uh, but yeah, there is outside revenue streams, uh, especially for leasing, backhaul and fiber in, in your right lane. Uh, to other telecommunications providers. Kramer, are there any other options that I've missed?
There's, I mean, you can open source the network, allow other providers to come in. That works in, you know, in bigger communities, uh, but that's.
I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't think everybody can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Um, you can run an open, open source network where you can buy, you can get two or three different ISPs competing on your network and providing same service with the same fiber, just to different customers. Currently, I think Charter was trying to talk to you about getting through town on your poles, you know, to do that. Um, you know, when we designed this, we, we allowed additional conduit space. And so, you can lease pathways to the providers like Fiberlight and AT&amp;T and Charter to run, uh, run the fiber through your town. Even though they weren't going to service it, you can charge them to run through it. Um, do they still allow franchise agreements on stuff?
Yeah.
So, franchise agreements with your, with your fiber as well. I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunity. It's, I mean, everybody thinks it's just for internet, but it's not. It's, it's another viable, it's, it's like a pipeline for data instead of a oil and gas.
There would be some, there would be some likely reduced calls, uh, to the city, uh, on your existing infrastructure that may be connected through cellular, I don't know if your lift stations and.
Yeah, all your automation in your city can be tapped in, tied into the network. And, and Laura, your, thanks for your question. Because I, I didn't think about saying that, but yeah, I mean, you can lease this out as a pipeline to the companies that can utilize it, provide services here. They can also use it as an information highway. Uh, one of the big things going on around the US is actually they're going out and, uh, buying full-blown gas pipelines and running the, the fiber optic cable through the pipeline. And because it's, I mean, in the venture, it's a pipeline. And, you know, so you can lease it out and generate revenue off of it, network. Go ahead.
Yes, how many broadband projects has Kramer done?
Um, currently, right now, we do about ten thousand homes designed for AT&amp;T. Uh, we have a nationwide contract with Hot Topic Consulting Group to do the design while they manage AT&amp;T project. Um, that's all over North Texas. Uh, but it's, I mean, we pass about ten thousand homes a month there.
Ten thousand?
Yes, for AT&amp;T design. We also do a bunch of their civil design. Um, we're currently doing a project in, uh, West Des Moines, Iowa, where there's about twenty thousand homes. Um, we're working for there. Uh, we just finished a Google and Microsoft project in West Des Moines as well.
Is that how many, how many city projects you're, you currently working with, Brandon?
That's, that's our operations and construction guys. My, my design group does the AT&amp;T engineering. We're also doing, uh, feasibility studies for a large client in Oklahoma that's studying a lot of the smaller communities that miss the funding. We just, we just finished up like Altus, Lawton, Tompaw, Lusyogi. And that's basically just data collection to prove how many points are there and how many people are being served. So, it's, we did quite a bit of designing, it's called contract.
And how long have you been with the company?
With Kramer, about, I started in August, right after, uh, right after that. But before that, I was with Mears, which is a very large company owned by Quanah. Uh, prior to that, I was with Highland Data Company Electrical, that's the director of engineering out of New York. And then with Lekor, which is another large, uh, international provider of fiber service.
Yes, sir. Do you have something to say, sir? No, sir. Bob, you've been off the quiet back there. It's you, yes, sir.
I've got an opinion, but, uh, where you're headed looks like the right direction. I'm in favor of the internet and broadband service. But I also, as a businessman, I built two warehouses out here and I had an income source before I spent the first nickel. I knew what we were going to, where we were going to end up with. You answer those questions and you'll get my support. But until those questions are answered, I'm, I'm in the air on this thing. I'm far ahead of guess.
You're in my district, so.
So, I just want to ask this one more time. As far as the income source, the leasing, so what we say is we believe in our community. We want to invest in our community. We want to use our money and our community for our citizens and give our citizens the opportunity to have the fastest, um, internet available.
Any suggestions?
Correct. Yes. And so, once we, we build that, then we immediately have, will these, um, is there any way to sign up any people before where they will commit to leasing? When you're talking about Fiberlight and AT&amp;T? Or do they approach you after you've built it?
Uh, you could start the conversation, um, I think, uh, with the right provider who has a, who has contacts with AT&amp;T. Uh, you start, you start exploring those now. Likely they will come later, uh, unless you just, uh, work at the right place at the right time, is my experience. Uh, we rolled ours out and started pursuing that. Uh, that was in our second year of development. It wasn't a primary, uh, source of revenue, uh, in the project that I built. But we started having that conversation and say, hey, we're here, uh, we're willing to work with you. We'll be a lot more flexible than just in the current providers. And those conversations were starting. The, uh, water tower project was prior to, uh, the fiber broadband project. But that's an example of how you can, uh, generate revenue off of the outside of your businesses, your residential business connection.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Watkins, in your community, what was the percentage of your population that went with your new broadband or with the city's broadband? Do you have holdovers that had others or they all went with you or how did that work?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, Eric Brown of that project, and it was very successful. And I think it did lay the groundwork for all communities in the state of Texas. Uh, I don't think all of them will be as successful as Mount Bellevue, but we had eighty percent of our residents connecting to that service within two years.
Okay. And I asked you this question before and I'm going to ask you again for a minute, right? What was your poverty rate there?
Yeah, it was, it was very low. But I say that with a caveat that not every project has to look like the one in Mount Bellevue.
I understand, but I'm just trying to get it, understand it. Ask all different kinds of questions so we can.
Yeah, no, it was, uh, completely different, different.
Right, because in my mind, I think of, of that being more like the city of Lourdes than, than us. But, but I'm not saying it can't work, I'm just asking.
But there's examples, I think, in, uh, in South Texas. Uh, the city of Far, for example, has probably a much higher poverty level than, than a lot of communities in southeast Texas.
And y'all are seeing it work down there.
And it's working down there.
Okay.
But it's, but it's a different, uh, outcome. If, you know, and that's part of your due diligence and processes, you know, at the end of the day, and I think that's where Councilman Daniel was going with this question with harm is caused. If the city invested the money and recouped their money over ten, fifteen, twenty years, was, but they didn't have a, a long-term outlay that they had to budget and general fund for, well, then they've delivered a service to the community that was needed without creating additional risk and liability. I think there's options to look at that as well. I mean, I think they have to be.
Yeah, and the lifespan, lifespan of fibers is pushing, what, fifty years? So, I mean, this is a fifty-year infrastructure project.
And another thing is in Mount Bellevue, underneath the city, like ten thousand miles of gas lines. So, you had a problem getting.
Yeah, and we definitely.
When you had to go to court to get.
Yeah, we definitely have destructability issues in Mount Bellevue, no doubt about that.
So, it was, it was different, a lot different than this.
I mean, and, and every project's going to be different. And, uh, and as I've talked to different communities across the state and they're looking and evaluating this, I think, well, there's a lot of different examples out there. Uh, there's not an open source project yet in Texas, but there is other open sources to reference in, in small communities. Open sources probably wouldn't work, right? There's not enough meat on the bone for everybody to come in and provide the service. So, I think for us, that, uh, the council's considering we partner with one provider. Uh, make, that you can ensure, you send in a driver's seat, you can ensure that every home is passed, every business is passed. Because not every, not, the private, uh, businesses aren't going to do that. They're going to go and then get the highest penetration rate.
Okay. So, is, is there any chance that, that one of the providers that we all use right now will be able to offer something better than what the city will be able to offer? Or will the city be so? City be so advanced?
Once we put fiber in and that's the latest tech.
Yeah.
They want to build.
So, so you have the cats be out, because I'm so old, I can't think of another way to say that. Um, you have.
We have the coronavirus.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Spark, Sparklight's offering, I'm just, I don't, I don't know what my electric, my internet bill is, because I pay for multiple sources.
Sixty-six dollars.
I'll just say sixty-six dollars.
Yes, sir.
Sparklight offers it, it runs out a, uh, copper cable. We can come in, run fiber, it'll be ten times speed, easily, hands down, same price. I'm just making, like I said, I'm just making a number.
And, and so your infrastructure also has a lifespan of fifty years, which is a good long time. So I, I think that's important for everybody here.
Yeah, there, and, I mean, Fiber Optic came out in nineteen fifty, anybody know? It was the nineteen fifties. I mean, and some of the original top of there, eighty years into it, it's still working. So, you know, fifty years is, is, is a safe bet. Uh, but, you know, they're estimating up to a hundred years right now, um, through research facilities.
Fiber's fully.
Especially in the ground.
Fiber's fully scaled. Uh, so once the, once the fiber is in the ground, what that means is, is that we can offer a gig today and five years from now, we can offer if, if the.
The world record on fiber optics for data transfer is like six hundred and twenty-four terabytes.
So you can, you can increase the speed over time, this competition. So if Sparklight comes in, they lay fiber next to you, you can increase the speed. Uh, and the example of that is, in Mount Bellevue, prior to COVID, we had six gigabytes of total data average coming through our entire network, pre-COVID. As soon as COVID hit and everybody went home to work and learn, it went to twelve gigs in two weeks. So it doubled in two weeks. Our agreement with our providers was, we got a ten gig pipe coming into the community. It was versatile so that we could accommodate the additional speeds without the throttling. So then what we went back was, we negotiated more data available to the city. And you just, you scale it, you can move it up.
Yeah.
It's very cost associated.
There was cost associated with that. There is cost associated with that.
So Anderson, when we, or Mr. Lane, when we looked at this feasibility study, we priced, we, we used a ten X GS pump, uh, system, which is, you could technically run ta- ten gigs to every person up and down, to every business.
And that's currently.
And so that's, well, that's because if we, if you priced a one gig system today, that's obviously in five years. And so, you know, being able to offer those capabilities, but once your glass pipe is in the ground, as those new electronics and new lasers are upgraded, they just shoot light at different frequency down the tube. You already have a tube there, and so if it's a hundred gigs in ten years, you can put, you can put a new laser, a piece of wood in there and it, it'll upgrade your system to the current need.
I have one more question. Explain how this will, um, be a, um, that, that this will attract businesses to our community having fiber optic broadband in our community. Will that be an incentive for people or businesses to locate here?
It's definitely something that's evaluated, especially in places that are outside of the major metros. If they're looking at locating here, you know, I would, I would argue now that, um, internet is, is no longer nice, nice to have. It is a utility for, for a residence, but it's even more so for a business. Um, I know most of the banks have, have two different, uh, connections coming in, so that if one goes down, they can continue to operate on the other. Um, and that's, uh, you know, Mr. or Councilman Daniel's, uh, example of taking a hard drive. Uh, we had the same issue with the oil and gas businesses in Mount Bellevue. People were transporting data over hard drives. It's in modern day, only express, but they'd be driving it somewhere. Uh, it's critical for business. Uh, what, what we've seen most recently, uh, y'all may have heard or read in the news, the Great Recession, uh, which I guess I'm part of, uh, I resigned and, and choose to work from home and, and run my own business. There's more and more people doing that. Uh, COVID kind of pushed everybody into that, into that space and created the technology to allow that to happen. And, um, the people that are already working from home in your community, uh, in your community are gonna have, um, additional capabilities and less constraints than they have today. It's gonna, you know, I think more so it's gonna benefit your existing businesses more so than your, than the businesses that are coming in the future. But it will help. I mean, it's no longer, it will no longer be a question of, can we go to Jasper, where we're gonna get our internet from? We know that we have gigabit or fiber optic network that we can tap into.
Thanks for bringing it up. Um, so, most of you know, I do a lot of traveling. I work for a lot of different companies, work on a lot of different projects. Um, a- as we say before, fiber, I mean, this is an information highway. A lot of companies, this, this is gonna sound funny, but as he, as everybody watched Star Wars or some type of science fiction, we got little robots running around doing tasks, cleaning up trash bins and throwing away. So, and they're actually building warehouses now that are fully automated and there's no lights, it's pitch black. So, I'm in them, there's no employees, it's all robots. Turn on, you turn on the switch, turns the lights on in the warehouse and there's just robots, forklifts, everything is automated. Well, it runs off the network. And I have mentioned this, some of the council here today. Uh, another thing that's going on right now is dynamic manufacturing. So it's on-demand manufacturing based off the orders that are coming in. Or if you have an information highway that can handle that amount of traffic to make the adjustments to the machinery to be able to support that type of, uh, business model. So. Well, and there's also server front, and there's all this, I could go on and on for about two hours.
Okay. To, to Councilman Golden's point about bringing a business with you and like his terms elaborate on, um, symmetry with fiber optics as opposed to the fact that I may have a hundred megabyte download on Sparklight, but my upload's twenty?
Yeah, and that's, uh, you did a great thing.
I just had it here this week.
Yeah, it's, uh, and tha- that's where the existing businesses and existing home business users see the biggest difference, right? It's your upload speed. If you're just, if you're, if you watch TV and use your Ring doorbell and your thermostat, uh, you don't need a gigabit, uh, network coming to your home. But if you're, if you're sending data out and pushing large, uh, documents, data, design, uh, you know, engineers, architects, they can work from home. Uh, I know in Houston, uh, there's very few companies, uh, accounting, the major big four county firms, they're not backing off this yet. Uh, you're pushing out large files, large quantity of data, that's where a symmetrical gigabit, uh, network really serves the community. And now.
So what you asked, question?
Oh, I was just gonna say, uh, what would be the harm in doing a survey with the community and getting a response and I guess, uh, a percentage of how many people wanted it or not? You know what I'm saying? Just to let them feel like they're a part of it.
Lee KJS, I should do the poll the other day. It was, uh, sixty percent for and forty for now.
Yep, that was the poll that we're doing.
We're talking, we're talking about a survey, so I think.
You about to poll on KJS?
I think, I think the problem is, I think a lot of people don't feel like there's a lot of transparency. And to do a survey, you know, a lot of people don't feel like they have an opinion, because they are gonna be a consumer. They're go, they are gonna pay the bills, so I feel like a survey would allow the people to feel like they're a part of it and not a outsider of what is being done. So what would it take or what would it be or the timeframe would be to do a survey to allow people to give their opinion and make an overall decision for the people, because they are, they're consuming, they are the ones who wanna spend the money?
I wa- I wanna clarify about that KJS poll. We did put up a poll and within about four hours, it was running about eighty percent against, uh, broadband project, about twenty percent for. It then jumped magically to about sixty forty, sixty-four, forty against. We got a call from Blocks, which is our, our provider, our internet, our, our website. And they said, we want you to know, it looks like your poll is compromised. And we, so we kind of wondered about that. They explained that, uh, our poll, if you vote on it, you can only vote once. But if you know what you're doing, you can go on your computer and refresh one of your, something to do with IP. And they said someone is refreshing, voting again, refreshing, voting again, refreshing, voting again. So it did skew the numbers, so at that point, the poll was useless.
I, uh, we, we, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Well, yeah, I wanted to say that, you know, before you do a survey, you really need to have a bottom line. If people understand what the payback period is. When I signed the lease and built those warehouses, I knew how quick I was gonna get my money back. If you know the payback period and will understand the finances, then you'll either get everybody on board or everybody will leave, one or the other.
Yep, there you go.
That's what.
Thank God, appreciate that. Thank you, Bob.
There was, there were several things, Nathan, that had transpired here and since I, I was not elected, I was actually appointed to fill in, run the fire term. And then we got on and one of the things that we started looking at was some projects that hadn't been completed. And one of them was a project on the east side of town. It was gonna be a training field, um, twenty-two years ago, twenty-one years ago, I think it was. And, uh, we went back and addressed it, the council approved it, and there's gonna be some schools out there, hopefully this next year. Uh, Latin school, firefighter certification, uh, potentially some stuff, another potential project that hasn't been approved or worked on yet. But there's a couple of things out there we're gonna utilize and probably. But those type of things, it was twenty-one years ago, it got funded the first time, if I'm not mistaken, on dates. Uh, we also had, we were trying to figure out with help from the city, what we could do to maybe generate some potential growth. Broadband definitely was one of the things that we discussed, but we also looked at utility rates. And with the help of some of the people that are on the utility board and the city, we're still working on some of it. But there's been a reduction of almost three cents a gallon. So it's something that's also could come into play. Um, the city had heard a lot of people talking about streets and with the help, um, consulting and some funds that came through. Had some streets that got worked on. One of them seems to be complete. It looks like the end of this month. I think there's twenty-four streets that are getting major work done on in our city. Um, from the time I got here to presumably wherever I stayed, you know, it's already been approved. The, uh, one of the other things we looked at was airborne property taxes. The taxes had a tendency to creep up. We had an opportunity to pay off some certificate obligations. And those certificate obligations dropped our tax rate from about thirty-six cents down to about ten. Hopefully, a budget workshop, we can.
No, but dropping it down to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I dropped ten cents off, I'm sorry, I missed the vote. And then we had a potential budget workshop we're looking at, somebody that's in operations, to see if we can, um, work on that airborne tax rate. Hopefully get it back behind where it was twenty years ago, see if we can get some growth back in here. So maybe, maybe with internet, maybe with a little lower utility rates, maybe with some lower airborne property taxes, maybe with a few streets that are fixed. And it's, it's, it's a little bite, but I think they also add up the bill, we can just keep everything together.
What's your season, what, point zero eight seven cents?
I'm not sure.
What?
Point zero eight seven?
That's what, it's the cost of it is point zero six, it varies a little bit in each, um, places. But then you add a percentage of it to its per M and O, which makes it about eight.
I, I noticed this drop, so.
It's about residential, it's about eight cents per gallon.
So I wanna follow up on parking, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, because like, we have another meeting, I think we have a meeting at five thirty at the mayor's.
I just wanna follow up.
City manager and I have to go too, so.
Excuse me. I just wanna follow up on the firefighting field, about what an opportunity that's gonna have for our citizens here with, uh, the students and we're also attracting other schools to come in and participate in that. When they graduate from that, they'll have some kind of certification. But also cybersecurity is a huge field. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah.
And we talked about LIT.
I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, I'll, please, go ahead and finish.
No, you go ahead. Um, go ahead.
Yeah, so I've actually reached out to a lot of, uh, education institutions, uh, everywhere from California over to New York. Uh, right now, I was actually in a teleconference the other day. Uh, I won't tell you the whole story, but in short, um, a lot of these institutions are partnering up either with local colleges or the colleges themselves or those educational institutions. And they're partnering up with municipalities, counties, states. Uh, one of the, of the teleconference I was in last week, it was, uh, out of Indiana. Uh, last year, there was over five hundred thousand cybersecurity jobs, really cybersecurity analysts, if you want to just kind of nail it down. But there was upwards of, I think, total nine hundred thousand as a broad cybersecurity. Well, a lot of those jobs, uh, well, let me take a step back. A lot of those institutions were actually come in and provide training for free for rural communities, uh, once they partner with the state, county or local government. At no cost until they land a job. Now, majority of those jobs are gonna range from about forty-five to ninety thousand dollars a year. So all you have to do is go in, you can take your high school kid and say, okay, you know, we're gonna sit you down. He takes a little entry exam, basically, and just says, hey, we think he can go to the program. So they do, someone has some type of filter for cybersecurity. Other jobs, not, not so much, but there's a lot of IT jobs out there that have not been filled in. And there's such a shortage, all these institutions are coming in now, saying, we're gonna train these people for free. They're in rural America, they come work remotely out of their house, and they can get a high-paying job benefits. And so the teleconference I was in last week was, was pretty interesting. Every. Many different, bunch of different ones. Uh, last one last week, there was twelve total people in it. And they were going through the course and all of them came from a real, small rural community, just like Jasper, had a lot of economic opportunity. And I just kind of asked them, I said, hey, if this program wasn't around, where, you know, what is your outlook where you're currently at? I mean, so there is no outlook. We got to let you go to the city. I said, okay, so this program here is gonna give you an opportunity to get a skill set and they help you with the career service and hook you up with a cybersecurity company like Hunter X or you can go work for AT&amp;T, Verizon or whoever. Because cybersecurity is in every single business now. It doesn't matter if it's a oil and gas company, it doesn't matter if it's convenience stores. There's a cybersecurity guy behind the scenes somewhere and he may be at his house working, like sixty-five thousand a year, full benefit package, retirement, I don't know, I don't think pension, that's another potential. And so, one of the requirements, funny thing, is one of, one, I asked this, uh, one of the institutions and they are actually interested and more expanding in Texas. And one of the requirements is fiber optics. And that was a requirement, and they were the toughest, difficult to a city like this, was they needed a redundant fiber optic network to build around. And so, I, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Okay, and, and I, I totally agree. I think that all this is all good, there's something that, something else that's going to, uh, just another, something else that's gonna bring something to Jasper. But one thing that I think that we all need to work on, counsel, we all need to work on our image here in Jasper. It doesn't matter what you have here. If people see you for, for some, somewhere or something that they don't, they don't wanna be, it don't matter. You can have fiber optic, you can have cable on the poles, you can have streets made with gold, but that don't mean they don't wanna move here. But we need, we need to work on us. And we, and, and I'm, I'm saying this for myself too. I think we all need to be able to communicate better as to what we wanna do and what direction we want this city to go in. And I think this is a good direction for the city to go in. But we have to be a little bit more transparent with our public and how we do things. Like, David, I've been working with you and we've been communicating and, and I think that's been pretty good. And we've been talking lately, so, and we have been. I'll be first to say that. But right now, I think we need to work on council, city officials and this city's image before we can move forward on anything else.
I would like to encourage all of the citizens of Jasper to please attend our city council meetings. Um, we've had a very sparse, um, crowd, um, of citizens. I would say sometimes maybe three or four people in the audience. And so, um, I would encourage, um, our citizens to come to our meetings, sign up for the public comment. Um, educate yourself, look at our City of Jasper webpage. That, that's where you can get information that's going on in your city. And Denise, what is the webpage address?
Jasper TX dot O R G.
Jasper TX dot O R G. So I would encourage everyone to get the word out, um, you know, come to the meetings, get on the website, ask questions, we're all available. Um, all of your council people are available to visit with you. That's why we're here and you elected us. And so I would just encourage everyone in that regard.
Mary, do we have anything else? If not, anybody else have any questions about, for, for Nathan or for Brandon? Not, and I'd like to make a motion that we move to adjourn.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.